Good morning all.
Good day.
We have pretty thin attendance today, but we also don't have anything on the agenda per se other than getting working group updates. So if you have anything on your mind to bring up, now will be the time to add it to the agenda so we can have that conversation. Vishkar, address any agenda items that you would like to bring up? Because there's nothing on the agenda per se. Well, we can start with the working group updates and then in the meantime, something comes might please add it to the agenda.
Yes, we could also call the meeting adjourned.
I actually have one topic I wanted to discuss.
Okay, so let's start with the working group updates. Who wants to go first? Do we have anyone from supply chain working group?
No update.
No updates?
No.
Hey, Arana. An update, yeah, one update related to that. I wanted to rather like get feedback from the supply chain group. This ties in with the white paper work we've been doing for version two. So there were some comments from, I think Frederick and Marina about what can we add? That is complimentary to the supply chain paper in the version two of the white paper. So some thoughts they were sharing was can we write something from an end user perspective where? Let's say I know what a good supply chain looks like, what to do using the paper, but whatever comes out of it. How as an end user of a cloud native system that is doing all the good things that supply chain paper recommends? How can I benefit from it? And what are the things like C V related info that comes out of F S P O M? Or some other workload identity related stuff that comes out would be useful. So that was one of the suggestions, I think. Maybe Marina is here or no, maybe not. But just wanted to get feedback from the folks who wrote that paper and see if they have any thoughts.
I'm not sure I fully understand what you're exactly asking for. Are you saying, I first heard, can, can we write something that complements it? The answer is sure you can write it, but what, what guidance are you looking for exactly?
Yeah, so it's, it's really up to us to decide. What I heard from both of them who unfortunately aren't there today is we haven't written much about how as an end user I can benefit from a secure supply chain. Apart from obviously having like a secure supply chain. So that piece is was missing. And if that can be put in version two, that would be beneficial. And worst case, we just put a two line summary and say for more info, go to the supply chain paper.
Version two of the cloud native security, right?
Yeah.
And, and the idea of the map is to help people figure out a trajectory and what order should they adopt technologies? What questions should they be making? What, what to, what's leverage, right? So from, from what I, I'm presuming without having it in front of me and not having looked at things since the proposal for, for updating it. Should you map the supply chain? Sure. Like, can you can like leverage the reference architecture or the best practices to say, hey, when you're, when you're deploying a like modern application platform that is cloud native, you should pay attention to the supply chain. Maybe it's worth out mapping, like there's some tables in the reference architecture that, that say, hey, these are, these are the most feature complete technology solutions for the different building blocks of the supply chain. Maybe you want to resample that content and say a in-depth discussion of this secure supply chain is out of the scope of the map. For additional information, look at best practices, white paper and the upcoming reference architecture, something like that.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, just to be clear, this was for version two of the cloud native security white paper, but map will benefit from it for sure. So, okay, so seems like the, at least in with the people we have, the idea seems like is just link it to the reference architecture and the paper. And then let people pick up whatever is useful from there.
Well, if it's, if it's the white paper, it might be annoying if you just redirect people to read something extra, right? It's like, well, this is the one thing I, I wanted to read to you, like a high level overview
Yeah.
of the parts and pieces. I mean, you can, you can ride whatever you want to ride about the supply chain as long as it's accurate. You don't need to like copy paste something from the other things or say, go read that like, sounds like you're looking more for like a couple paragraphs.
Yeah.
To detail supply chain.
Yeah, looks, looks like that. I think that might be useful, like people will get a very, very high level idea, hundred thousand feet idea. And then for 10,000 feet, go to the supply chain paper. I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, you don't want to give them like a bookmark, like, like a list of bookmarks, right? That's not what a white paper is.
Exactly. But my question is, who's end user in this context? To me, supply chain security is for developers, right? To make sure that any dependencies and any softwares that they are using from open source third parties is secure. So, so defining who's end user in this context will be important as well.
Yeah, so good point. I think my perspective on that is any organization or team that is consuming a cloud native product that is built using a secure supply chain is an end user. So generally, like all typical end users like banks and financial industries and other technology companies that are not selling cloud native products but are consuming them.
I mean, if, if anyone in this space hasn't heard anything about supply chain in the last two years, they've been living under a rock.
Exactly.
So you could, you could just call it off, say, hey, this is building back on, on version one and supply chain is out of the scope. I do think for like a complete white paper of cloud native security, you need to talk about the secure supply chain.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you should give it like a nerve in a shot and writing like a novel take that fits the narrative of the white paper.
Right.
There's so many publications and so many other resources. But you shouldn't just hear my opinion, like we have like 15 other people here, like I'm sure they all have thoughts and perspective.
Yeah, I guess in terms of benefits, I guess one thing that might be, people might be looking for is that they're selling secure supply chain. So they're in their industries, they're in a bank and they're saying to the I T director, look, we need you to pay more attention to this. It's answered the question of why. And obviously we can all say, yeah, we know why. That's like, you know. But if I, if I'm trying to sell to a C I O or C T O, I can say, hey, the C N C F say the benefits of focusing on your supply, your supply chain are these things. This is why we think you should do this. And it's kind of like the appeal to authority. So they can essentially appeal to C N C F as an authority. And okay, maybe people should ever do that, but it kind of helps. If you can say, look, it's not just me, the security person telling you this, it's this big industry group who are telling you this. And I'm guessing that may be the kind of thing that for end user companies might, might help them.
Yeah, I think that's a solid point. That's worth the kind of using that as a pivot and writing the content in the actual paper based on that.
You know, along those lines, it might also be good to, to state that there are that there's more than just our, like, we recognize that there's more than cloud native to like securing the software supply chain. And that there are other groups and organizations driving positive change and filling the, the gaps. So doing a call out like higher level L F, like openness of stuff.
Right.
And calling out those initiatives might be like beneficial for the reader to be.
Got it.
Where, yeah.
Okay, I think that makes sense. If you all others who haven't spoken have thoughts, happy to hear that and get that feedback.
Thank you. Okay. Who wants to go next in terms of working group updates? Anyone from security controls today?
I'm part of security controls. I'm updating. I mean, there's some progress on the document in terms of the mappings. I've added some additional mapping for the supply chain white paper that we've added there. So yeah, that's part of the progress which I've made, but that's about it.
Um, yeah, okay, thank you. To that effect, I do want to share with you that we had that discussion with C S A. And memorandum of understanding is under legal review by C N C F. Once that is finalized, I will schedule a meeting with the cloud controls matrix team and C S A and our security controls mapping. So we can start mapping out cloud native controls to all these standards. And that will also satisfy an issue that Brandon had created. It's called, it's issue number eight thirty six, I think. It's on auditability for cloud native controls. So we can have a mapping of the controls and then use Oscar to build those detection and violation of those controls as well. So follow up discussions on that. I will set up John Zola is out, so. But I'm trying to find time where we can have a discussion with C S A on this topic.
Right. So one of the questions in our, in our controls meeting last time was like, do we continue working on the tasks which we were supposed to, or do we wait till the the C S A partnership is complete and then we formulate like what C S A will do and what we will do as a part of the white paper?
So I think the, the discussion was, the decision we took was that whatever controls you are mapping from the white papers, let's finish that as phase one. Phase two will be where we expanded to, you know, other nest controls. How, how do they apply to a cloud native platform, right?
Got it. Makes sense.
Thank you. Hope that answers.
Yep, yep, cool.
Okay, and for the serverless working group, we have a meeting later today. Over the holidays, some people have added some content to the white paper. We're going to decide what we are going to do, whether we are going to keep it as a separate paper or we want to integrate it into the C N cloud native security white paper version two, depending on the quality of the content, I guess. So I had requested a few folks to go review it as well. I haven't looked at it, so I will check today to see if there are any additional comments about the quality of the content there. So go from there. That is what is about serverless working group. Any other working groups who want to provide any updates? Or am I missing anyone?
Security assessments. I see Matthew is on the call.
Yeah, security assessments.
Good day. Is my audio coming through?
Yes.
Good day, loud and clear.
Thank you. So, good day, everyone. It's been a while since I've been on these meetings, regrettably, just hard to find that work slash tech security balance there sometimes with meetings. But anyways, so John Consella and I are leading the review for that. And I was able to pull in some individuals who volunteered via the GitHub ticket and tech security for the R G O review. But I didn't, besides John and myself and the R G O team, I wasn't able to get many, really get some additional people to come into the sync up meetings we had. And now that we've wrapped up the naive question period, we're starting to slice this up. It's actually a rather large one. It's more or less four sub reviews for R G O components that make up the big overall arching review as a whole. So we've dealt with logistics and how we'll combine them and save time and whatnot, but we need reviewers for the R G O assessments, just A in general and B, since it's rather large, so I'm trying to drum up interest or see if I can ping a few people one on one without haranguing them. But yeah, if we can get some more eyes, more reviewers on that, it would be key because at least from the tech security perspective, I believe it's just John and myself at this point. If there's someone who's been on the meetings and I've been oblivious to it, pardon if I've missed you.
And Matthew, can you just reiterate, these are four separate projects that we're trying to review as part of the R G O project, isn't it?
Yes, I would say, I would say that from R G O's perspective, it is one product. So it makes sense that they've lumped them together. So from their perspective, it's one product, for lack of a better term, and it's composed of four sub projects. R G O continuous delivery, R G O events, R G O work and R G O rollouts. So they're all four distinct components. And we've identified points of contact, like owners from the R G O team for each of those four components.
Okay.
And we've also identified the relevance of security to each of them. And in short, I would say they're all equal peers. The security from their sort of opinion was each of those four components, the significance of security to it as a function and the functionality of the product and its value is nine out of 10, very relevant and pretty much equal amongst all of them. The only distinction is some of them would have larger attack surfaces than others, just due to the nature of the tool. But for like a very term, security is a first class citizen for all of them. So that's why they're so keen on the going through this process.
Okay, thanks for the context, Matthew. And so do we have leads for these four sub projects or are we looking only for reviewers at this point?
Reviewers, the gist of it is, is John and I are lead or the two leads associated with this. And we need to pull in more reviewers to slicing up the, the actual work and the reviews now that we've wrapped up the naive questions.
And how can folks get involved? Like, how do they reach out for getting involved with the project as reviewers?
I, for starters, I could push a link right here in the chat and anywhere else we feel that it's relevant to put it, whether it's Slack or tell your friends, tell your parents sort of thing. I can provide the link to there and people can just add a comment saying, hey, I'd like to join in the R G O review GitHub ticket or issue. And then I can just follow up immediately, just copy paste the template for, hey, can please fill out the conflict creation? And that's pretty much it. Or I could also post the link to the Slack chat. People can ping me there. I'll, I'll still ask for a copy of the conflict of interest sign off as part of the GitHub ticket, but either just pretty much whichever way GitHub or Slack allows people to reach out to us, we get their sign off and we loop them in as soon as possible.
Perfect. Can I just post the ticket, the GitHub ticket in the chat as well as on like Slack, the tax security channel? So more folks can see that.
Absolutely. If, if I may take one more minute, there's one interesting thing we did with this approach here, which I think is kind of neat. In short, since it's for sub reviews, the reviews I suspect will be individually smaller than like one big typical project, but just merging them back and forth to Google Docs, back to markdown, especially with four of them, they have to merge together. We took a slightly different approach than usual. We're keeping all the assessments in markdown format. And the R G O team, using their own private GitHub repo or their own private instance of it is created essentially a pull request for each one. And we're putting all of our comments in the Git pull request rather than in a Google Doc using Google Docs comment and review functionality. This means that at the end of the day, when the self assessments are done and they're doing the joint review document, they can more or less concatenate these files without having to spend several days, which I think was the case in the cloud custodian one to like recombine back from Google Docs to markdown, et cetera. So we made that change. And then the other is we're trying to minimize the number of sync up meetings and do a mostly asynchronous model, just because the idea is different G O's, different time zones, so cut down on the sync meetings and just do more of a developer centric model than I have, at least with the last couple ones. I like it so far, but we'll, we'll see how well it works out at the end of all this, but I thought it was just worth mentioning, we're trying a slightly different approach this time around while still adhering to our core responsibilities and contracts. That's pretty much it for me. If there's no further questions, I will go on mute and go grab the GitHub ticket link and put it in the chat here.
It's posted.
Thanks, John. There we have it. Oh, one other thing, John was courteous enough to provide us with a a Zoom bridge for our, for any meetings. I don't know if it's an option or not, but I'm wondering if there's some sort of pool that C N C F would be willing to give outside of these sort of like our tag security recorded meetings. I'm wondering if there's a a means or a budget for just a handful or a pool of private Zoom accounts. So if we want to do like discreet security review meetings where we don't want it necessarily public record, we can grab from that rather than reusing individuals' resources.
I, I cannot tell you what certainty if there is or not, what would be helpful if we have an estimate of how many accounts under what plan, how much it would cost. We can present the case. We'll open up a service desk ticket and it can be yes or no, but they're going to ask us like, hey, how much are you asking for?
Okay, would it be, I believe I might have a meeting later, like the, a couple hours with Brandon and Ash, if memory serves me correctly, I'll bring it in again there, but I'll quickly check out the pricing for Zoom and see and get like the wrong numbers ASAP.
We, we might be able to fold it under the same plan and we can create using the tax security account meetings with unique individual links.
Yeah, that, that would, that'd be fine by me.
Yeah. And you would control like who you share those links with? Or make it like invite only meeting, right?
Got it.
Trouble, yeah. And you could like pipe it to a different like, hey, don't upload this meeting to YouTube type of thing.
Yeah, yeah, we, like, we even already have like sort of a quick meeting sync up at the beginning, like, are we going to record this year in a, okay. You know, in case our kids photobomb the, the recording or something.
Yeah. Hey, you guys are working on R G O. I, I know that R G O and Flux interoperate somewhat. A guy from Flux came to the tax security channel on Slack asking for, hey, we did an audit, the audit team advised to engage with tax security to help design the user subsystem for Flux. So I, I think it, if, like you guys have familiarity, like depending of like breadth and depth and like what, what type of help are they looking like, how involved? Maybe like, well, we have them do an initial design and we put it on their assessments. Maybe they need someone to play more an architect role and we could give them like a security palette, like an elevated security palette to do that. I asked them to write down more details and open an issue, but I think we can tackle this one a few different ways to help them out. But yeah, just heads up.
I believe so. I, if memory serves me, they had their own, I guess, out of pocket, like for lack of a better term, commercial like audit of what they have going on. And now their intent is to make sure they're pretty much going through the appropriate process so that they, on top of their own, like audit, they can get the C N C F blessing slash sign off that's graduated and whatnot. So they, they, they've got their acting gear from what I've been seeing thus far.
Oh, that's awesome. On the Zoom accounts, George says, yeah, C N C F to take it as the preferred method. Whenever in question, ask George.
Done.
That's my rule.
I just knew who to ask, you know? It's a valuable skill. All right. I, I think I burned up my fair slice of time. So that's it for me.
That's good. Thank you, Matthew. Security assessments, John Consella.
Uh, what?
Do you have any updates?
I, I think Matt just gave them, yeah?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I just got a comment from Emily on the palace. She's, so I'm going to open a P R. I put some updates in there. Where did the ticket go? I put some updates into a ticket last week. Got her to take a look, see. So I'm going to open the A P R to sort of more make a more official version of the power. And that'll start going through. So once we have that, I'll probably put a ticket number into a upcoming meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other working group that I might have missed?
It's Mark here. No updates here.
Mark, you're very faint.
Oh.
So I know updates here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other topics we want to discuss today? If not, I, I think.
Fred, yeah, hey, sorry, Arana. It looks like Fred is here. I just wanted to check with him if he wants to chime in on the supply chain topic we just discussed in the beginning. I believe he joined after we finished our discussion.
Yeah, I don't have context on, on the topic. Is, is there something we can?
Yeah, I can give some context. So Fred, remember we exchanged some D M's on the cloud native security white paper version two. Where you were wondering whether we could add some stuff about workload identity or supply chain in that, in addition to what's already in the supply chain white paper. So just wanted to help you share your thoughts and get some feedback from the community on whether that would make sense. So far, what we discussed, it's basically been, let's keep it high level to why we need to do it versus going really deep into that text stack.
Ah, I understand. It's like the discussion is more like to, to answer the question of like, should you include it? It's like, yeah, you should include it. It's like the discussion is more like to, to answer the question of like, should you include it? And it's like, yeah, you should include it. It's entirely up to you as the paper owners, like how much you expand and elaborate on it. Unclear to me is if you're asking for someone to come in and contribute that part. Sounds like that's more the undertone of, of your question and it's not.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we have some couple of folks, Fred and Marina, who are interested in contributing. What I was trying to get at is let's get feedback from the authors of supply chain paper. So we don't end up kind of mixing things and so make, make sure that the content is benefiting by the existence of the supply chain paper and vice versa.
Yeah, I, I don't think there'd be overlap with that. You'd be duplicating content if you write a section of like cloud native security white paper to talk about supply chain security and also say, hey, a full depth view of this is out of the scope of, of the white paper. There's other resources we have published on the subject.
Okay. Yeah, my, yeah, and my primary concern is someone reads through the cloud native security white paper implements judicially all of the controls and says, okay, I'm done. And so with while missing supply chain as a, as a key thing that we've been actively focusing on. So I think setting the structure there and then handing off saying, here's where you go find deep information. Just make sure you have included for these for these top values you get out of it. For in-depth discussion, please see this paper for, for supply chain for, for for the supply chain portion.
So and even hint that there's more than that, right? Cause like our reference architecture really hones on build components, but it doesn't cover like an end-to-end set of controls for a supply chain, like whatever NIST eight hundred fifty three has on, on supply chain. Or things that may be more in the purview of open S S F. So hinting that there's like a broader landscape might also be beneficial for the reader there. Even if they want like an extensive like view on like S bomb comparison comparisons.
So I do need to drop for another call, but if, if that's an area that you find of interest, I'm happy to contribute in that space for, for that topic. So and we, we had the conversations externally for, for, for that, which I think led to this question. But yeah, thanks for, thanks for raising it a pause here.
Yeah, thanks.
Again, push for us is yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just create an issue and attack the folks we discussed it with. So we can continue this later.
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else to discuss? If not, I'll give you back 30 minutes today. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you. Bye.